All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of May 12th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the nation, our God, and the household, the reigning justice of all.
Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Larry Fox.
Here.
Jeff Newsom.
Here.
Joe Kliney. Sue Grissom.
Here.
Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Tom Murphy. I will call.
All righty, thank you very much. Item 4A, Approval of Our Meeting Agenda.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Newsom, second from Commissioner Mitchell. I'll get that out. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name, motion carries. Next up, Approval of Our April 7th Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
I have one correction. I just caught it, just a small typo on page four. One, two, three, the fourth paragraph down, and it's the second to last sentence. It says Chair Fox suggested another use category be devised instead of revised. Just make that into revised. Is that right? Or is it is devised? Maybe it is devised.
I think it's devised.
Yeah, so I'm wrong.
Okay.
Okay, so good to meet. Sorry about that.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom. Can I get a second?
Support.
And a second from Commissioner Voight. Any further changes, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name, motion carries. Next up, Item 5B, Approval of Our April 21st Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
Submove.
Motion from Commissioner Mitchell, second from Commissioner Kliney. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name, motion carries. Next up, Item 6, Call to the Public. We have two this evening. Anybody in the audience want to speak? If you could get your name and address.
Good evening.
Hello.
It's Carrie Angott, 2075 Wilson Lane. I happen to notice on the agenda packet that you are requesting to approve the meeting notes from April 7th and April 21st, and as a concerned resident and citizen of Heartland Township, I was just curious as to the special meeting minutes from the meeting on April 14th. I didn't notice that there was anything posted on the website and/or in the agendas to approve those.
Normally don't react, but I'm gonna flip it to Troy, I believe, because it's a special meeting.
The April 14th is actually, that's actually the regular meeting, and we just don't have those minutes done yet. That was a little bit longer meeting, and we've got a new staff person that's working on that one, and so we're having to spend a little more time in training someone in two minutes, and we're pretty close on that, but they're just not done, so.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Oh yeah, they would be.
Thank you.
They have to be.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Anne McGuire. I'm at 12707 Deer Path Lane. So, I'm a teacher, and we're always told to start out with something positive. So we moved to Heartland about two years ago, and we absolutely love it here. So my concern is about the proposed new buried place. Okay, so I gave my positive. I'm a little disappointed, being a Deer Path Lane resident, and not having received notice. I understand the 300-foot boundary, but with our large properties, we weren't included. So I feel like I'm coming a little bit late into the game, and I missed a lot of the first round with the developer. But I did watch some meetings, and I've learned some things about planning. So nevertheless, I just wanted to comment that perhaps next time, that be taken into consideration. I get notice of the fireworks, but not of this change. And I am requesting that you recommend a reduction in the density of the proposed property. I'm very concerned, I'm not sure it, I understand the need for apartments and condos and different types of homes in the proposed or in the comprehensive plan, but I'm not sure about this volume. I feel it's very excessive, and it doesn't quite match the surrounding areas. So another problem I have is with the differences in the density. So we're a low-density area, and to me, this is like mega-density with the proposed cluster homes, especially right along Deer Path Lane, as well as across in the southern plan, right by the farm. And that change in the types of, you know, residencies is alarming to me, so that is a concern to me, and I think a reduction would help. I was really pleased to hear, see other people, and kind of, I feel like I know them through the videos, but just the respect that the residents have for your process, and the fact that no one's saying stop the development, but we are asking for a change and a reduction to really step back and think before we go forward and consider the concern of the citizens. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on forward.
Hi, my name is Amanda Britton. I'm at 13890 Hearthstone Lane. I guess I kinda wanted to pick up from there. I'm kinda coming late to the game as well, but maybe in the future, I mean, this is probably on the developer's end, but it's always nice to do some kind of like a design charrette, if you guys are familiar with that term, of bringing the community in, seeing how we feel something like this should be developed, and seeing if that can be incorporated in from the developer. I know a lot of developers do do that type of a thing, and it's nice to kind of give and take a little on both ends. I'm not opposed to there being development there. I just think the type of development, and it doesn't quite fit in with the community, the feel of Heartland, and instead of us changing how we want Heartland to be, I think it's on the developer to kind of change their, lack of a better way of explaining it, their stamp where they go out throughout the state and just stamp their own little thing everywhere. They should try to accommodate us and what the residents here feel Heartland is. We're a community itself, where looking at these plans, they want to create their own community in themselves, and I don't think that's who we are. It would be nice if we would be able to talk to them and say, hey, listen, if you can change a little bit, we'd be happy to have you, but it might be a little late in the game for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we will close the call to the public. We have no public hearing this evening, so our big agenda item tonight is Item 8A, Walden Woods Resort Site Plan Number 539-SP. Welcome, if you guys want to have a seat. We'll let Troy introduce the project, and then we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. I'm gonna start off with the zoning map of the township, and at the bottom of the monitor or the screen would be M-59 running across the bottom here, and then this is US-23 going kind of north and south. The property is around this area of Lake Walden, and the campground is kind of depicted here, and then the lodge is just south of that. So this is the general area on the property that we're going to be talking about for this particular project. I've kind of labeled it as three separate projects in the staff memorandum that you all have. The property here is zone plan development, somewhat unique in that most of the other properties that are zone plan development are approved with a planned development agreement that outlines what the standards are for revisions or new developments in that. This case is a little different in that this has been existing here for a number of years, and the standards aren't as defined as you would have in other planned developments. What they are proposing to do, let me just bear with me here. I'm gonna go to the 1986 plan. So this is the plan from 1986, and in the staff memorandum, I've outlined some of the history as best I could from what we have. This is 23 out here. There's an entrance that comes into the site, so this is the campground area in this location. This is the lake, and then down in this area would be the Cromeane Lodge Clubhouse here. So what they're proposing to do, if I use this plan as kind of a template, is this portion of the campground on the north side never was constructed. It's somewhat of an open field right now, and although it's shown on this plan, this was never constructed, and so one of the projects is to construct campground sites in this area. Another portion of this project is to install sanitary sewer lines for these camp sites here, so that camping units can, when they pull in, then they can connect to a sanitary sewer line and then have a discharge right from that campsite, as opposed to having to drive the camper unit over to a dumping station and then dump it out, and then either return or leave. Then the third project is with the Cromeane Lodge itself, and I probably am doing these in reverse order from the staff memorandum, so I apologize. They are doing an addition for a walk-in cooler freezer to that lodge facility. So with that, I'll just leave it open for further comments or questions.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is turn it over to you guys, and then when you got done with what you've got, we can talk about the three components.
Sounds great.
All right.
How about if we turn the order around and do it the other order? That'll really confuse everybody.
Probably the easiest if we start with the walk-in cooler.
Sure.
It's on the first page, least of the document that I was given. And so what we're talking about doing here is we have a, oh, good. Thank you.
Troy. Is this the page you want, or I'm not, this is kind of that cooler?
Yeah, that's perfect. So you'll see the, you control the mouse, but you see the dark rectangle on the bottom right part of the building. Half of that is a building addition. Half of it's currently existing, and what we're, if you look, let's just say, north of that rectangle, is the rest of the building frame, and so we're gonna basically square out this building by putting in this addition. The addition will be somewhat standalone in that we have to put it, you know, its own foundation. It's just gonna be a special cooler building that will have a cooler and a refrigerator, a freezer and a fridge, and a basically a walk-in to accommodate our storage and frozen goods storage needs. It's been designed by our engineers or our architect, and you have all the stamped documents for that. I don't know if you have any questions about this design or?
You want to go through them one at a time right now? Do you want to do that?
Sure.
You guys want to ask? Do you have any questions on the cooler portion of the request?
Same materials as the existing building.
Same materials, it's gonna blend. We want to blend the roof line, we want to blend the building, so it'll look seamless. It looks kind of odd today, actually, so it'll fix kind of that deformity and make much more usable space.
Is the current, I think you're using vinyl. Is the current lodge vinyl, or is it just similar sized?
It's a vinyl siding.
Is it?
We have, there was original, you know, wood. It was all wood. They actually milled the wood right there on site originally when they built that building. But painting is quite the challenge, so thank God for aluminum siding and vinyl siding products. So that's what we'd do. We'd blend it in, and it would be seamless. We actually would be improving the entranceway for delivery of goods there. Currently, we have, you know, deliveries are made there, so we'll be bringing those up to a better standard for our delivery, and it will flow well within our parking structure there.
This is being built on an empty part of the section, or?
Correct.
But you're tearing down a portion, too.
Correct. We're tearing down what would be considered an addition to the building that was added on at some point previously, so not the original structure, if you will. That's an addition, too. There's been multiple additions on the back, I think so.
I just wondered about some of the issues on ADA. Do you have to comply with anything for a building code?
The architect is complying with all the requirements there. There's gonna be a long ramp for entranceway that'll be going up there, and then the safety, whatever, for this, you know, there has to be a certain rail, and all that stuff is built into the design.
Anything else on the cooler? Okay, it's all part of one motion, so let's just go through. Why don't you take us to the next point?
On to number two.
Yep.
For the second one, we'll deal with the sewer expansion throughout the existing campground. Troy, I don't know if you can get to sheet SP-11, about the third sheet in. There it is. That's it.
Do you want this one? You want a pointer or not?
Nah.
Okay.
Well, just, I just thought I'd put it up there so we have the right thing we're looking at, and you can all take a look at. As was previously explained, this is the existing campground. It's actually the south portion of the existing campground. And this area here was, is not currently, there's no sewer here, there's no direct hookup. All these sites are used, occupied every summer on a regular basis, and as they come and go or leave, they take the trailer and head to the dump station, and there's three dump stations?
There's one primary dump station in the back of the campground.
Okay. And I think there's another one. Anyway, you go to the dump station, and you discharge the sanitary waste. It goes to the treatment plant. Obviously, that's not a convenient situation, and there is sewer throughout the rest of the campground sites, and they'd like to just sewer these. So the issue here is simply a request to extend the sewer system that's already out there to provide direct sewer connections at each of these campsites. Fairly straightforward. This is, I didn't notice a comment in the review comments that we were provided from HRC with regard to the fact that the sewers here may not conform to and comply with your township's standards. This is a private sanitary sewer system, as so the standards were, are the state of Michigan's standards for sanitary sewers and campgrounds. This does have to be approved and permitted through MDEQ's campground unit, so those are the standards that we.
Curiosity question. Do they require any kind of inspections on these to make sure they're working right?
Yes, they inspect the sanitary sewer.
Annually.
Annually, through the permit, through the current permit. The permit is updated annually. The system is permitted and inspected by the state, so.
I think what Mr. Perry is indicating is that I don't know if the township maybe?
Has jurisdiction.
Has jurisdiction.
Right, and I was just curious if, given there's ever how many hundreds of people using it a summer, during the summer months, whether there's an inspection.
The one thing I would be curious is, years ago, on some of these sanitary sewers systems, when they were put in, the DEQ would authorize them, subject to the township taking responsibility should they not be properly maintained. I didn't see anything in the paperwork for this. That's since been found to be illegal.
Correct.
And I know that the state can't require us to take over or something.
Correct. Right. Well, and this is a little unique. The situation you're talking about wherein the township was required to take them over were small residential communities. Essentially, a housing development or a private sanitary wastewater treatment system would have to be constructed in such a way, and you were obligated to take it over, and that is no longer legal. This is a campground. It's controlled under a different set of regulations, the campground rules, and as such is not a residential use that you would be obligated to take over anyway. Essentially, if it failed or was not permissible, it would be shut down.
Any other comments? Questions on the sewer component? I think number three.
We're getting.
You're moving.
Threw them pretty quick. All right, number three, probably for ease of understanding, Troy, if you can go to the development plan. You can stay there, I spoke.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. As you saw during the initial presentation, there were a group of campsites originally on the plan that were never constructed. There were 28 shown in the original plan. A U-road that went up and down, there were 14 on either side, and in, right in this area, it lies immediately to the west of the trailer storage and north of the existing And at this point, they would like to construct these. The construction is shown before you here. We have shown them as, the north end of the campground up here, the roads are gravel. They're not in the paved section, so we're extending the gravel drive. The drives up here are all one-way. This, as well as the other campsites that we just took a look at, will be sewed, and we will extend the water system lines that are out there up through here, so all of these campsites will be serviced by both water and sewer, along with electric power. So they're full hookup sites.
So is everything a hookup site now?
Everything's.
When you're done?
I think so, yeah. Everything's a hookup site. As I said, there were originally 28 sites here. We are currently proposing 37. So the expansion, as I say, takes up about the same area. The campground in the approved PUD, well, also in your set was the approved row engineering plans from when the campground was constructed. And that was provided to you to depict what the township last saw as the approved campground And that is essentially, it shows both situations. The area that is not sewed is depicted on there that we're now searing, along with the additional 28 sites that we're now gonna finish off and put in 37, so. There you have it. We're here for questions.
There's one other section, by the way, in the master plan that has future campsites that we have no plan for doing right now, or, but that was kind of thought through, and then there's another section up in the hills, I guess along the coast hill area, that was designed for something as well, which we actually do have the sewer run to, but nothing developed. I think we actually came through 20 years, 15, 20 years ago with plans to do cottages through there. Just kind of looking at the whole plan, I don't see, like, there's, there's nothing else that wasn't done besides these three areas, I think, that I'm pointing at.
Okay. Any questions for him on the third point, which is the addition on 37 campsites?
I have some questions. So first off, I noted, and as you mentioned, the other roads in that area are gravel, and I kind of can see on the plan where I can see, like, the fur lane, it says 15-foot wide gravel, and I think in our report, it says the new one's gonna be 15 feet wide gravel.
Correct.
I don't see any dimensions or anything on the plans. I see sometimes references. Am I, like, missing, just for documenting what's coming in? Does it say it anywhere, and I'm just missing that info?
Well, I can comment. I just galed the width of the drives to be 15 feet, so.
As far as the actual width of the?
Yeah, kind of like the profile. I found a profile detail that had an asphalt detail, but I just didn't ever really find anything that said, we're gonna do this, it's gonna be 15, it's gonna crown, it's gonna be six inches thick. I just didn't see anything. Is there anything that describes that in his plans?
Hmm, probably not, but we can. It's a campground. Essentially, these are gravel lanes.
Right, exactly.
We're not constructing roads here.
No, I understand. You're matching what you have now, and I was reading, kind of, I couldn't tell at first. I was in the other section that was paved, and I'm like, okay, I see a paved section. Then I saw the report said it was gravel, it's 15 feet. I have no problem. Everybody's been reviewing it. I just didn't know in this set if that's something that you typically would mark, comment on, you know, kind of just say, 15 feet wide gravel, four inches of stone, just a comment.
We can add that.
All right.
For a record.
Yep.
You know, because I know what you're saying, a record to be passed.
Speaking of records, Troy did a phenomenal job of pulling together 40 years of history.
Yeah.
That was pretty impressive. I haven't seen half of this stuff, too, so I was like, oh, that's neat. I haven't been around that long.
And the other question I had is, now I see, you're, probably just now, you're having to kind of bring up to the standard is do like the bio swell?
Yeah.
Is that something new? Because right now, I'm guessing there's crowned, it goes off to the side, but this is kind of a new requirement, or what's going on with that?
Yeah, back when the campground was built, Lincoln County didn't require dealing with drainage, but obviously, we have to do that now. So there is a requirement to make sure that we provide a stormwater management system as a part of the improvements.
Just even though it's gravel, and it's just gonna kind of soak in?
Even though it's gravel, we're still required to do it. In fact, unfortunately, one of the comments from HRC was that they would like, they essentially want greater volume in bio swells to make them act more like detention bases, which we can accommodate itself.
Okay. Just trying to understand that, too.
Yes, even though it's only gravel.
Yeah, it's just gravel.
And there are grass sites, and, yes, we still have to provide stormwater management.
So then in those bio swells, basically, you're just kind of got a hole in the ground. Mostly, it's lawn, but then there's a couple little sections with some special plantings?
It's essentially a grass soil that will take up whatever sediments come off the sites.
Yeah.
Prior to the discharge out to the field.
Into the creek?
Yeah, it'll end up in the creek.
Okay. Okay, just trying to understand.
Okay, any answers?
Comment you made about, it's from the engineering firm on larger.
Yes.
Swell. I assume you're referencing the question that they want, or the mention that they wanted 100-year calculation versus the 10 on your drive?
Correct.
How many campsites do you have? I don't know if we ever, how many are on the whole project?
Currently or approved?
Well, currently.
Let's do both, right?
Let's do currently and add 37 if you wish.
How many do you think? Because I got 302.
I keep telling everybody 320, so.
See, even we don't agree. Counted campsites that we identified when we were out there and surveyed it up, we surveyed up 302 sites.
Okay.
So now, and we're proposing to add 37 more, taking us to a total of 339. The row plan shows an approved number of 348, so.
Okay. So the new total will be approximately 339?
339.
Okay. In your process, if MDEQ, have you done anything about permits from them yet? Have you applied for any of the permits?
Applied for them? No, we've been in contact with the state for both the sewer extension and the campground expansion permits.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions on number three? Comments? Do you have any problems with, other than the comments you made for the reviewing agencies? The HRC, you're gonna comply with whatever they've asked for?
Oh, no, I never comply with anything.
Well, I know. Well, that'll be part of the motion, so.
Well, most of their letter were primarily comments. They really weren't.
Requirements.
Requirements of any. Requirements of any kind, being, yes, we have to comply with the state requirements and soil erosion control and so forth, and yes, we will do all those.
So you have, really, that's all that was there?
I guess the only surprising comment, and sure, we'll conform, but they said all stormwater pipe improvements shall be C-76 or HDPE. Yeah, I can change it to a plastic pipe. We proposed a culvert under the road, which there's 100 out there now, but I guess I can't put a culvert in anymore. It's got to be a plastic pipe. So, I mean, it's a minor issue, but it does seem a little bit interesting that although there are dozens of them out there literally functioning today, we're no longer allowed to put in a simple 12-inch diameter culvert under the drive. So I just, point of reference.
It is a point of reference. Seems like the world's going that way, though.
Yeah, but there is nothing wrong with a corrugated metal pipe. I mean, so.
There's nothing wrong with the way a lot of things used to be.
Well, but no, there's nothing wrong. We still use them today. So I recognize the township has a standard, but application of every one of these standards in every situation doesn't always net a benefit to either you or the applicant.
Yeah.
I've climbed off myself on some of them.
Okay. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, we'll adjust the stormwater design basins.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
I move to approve Site Plan Amendment Application Number 539 for the Walden Woods Resort Complex located along old US-23, subject to the following conditions: one, the applicant complies with the requirements of the VPW Director, Township Engineer, Fire Marshal, as outlined in their respective letters; two, applicant complies with the requirements of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, Livingston County Drain Commissioner's Office, Livingston County Health Department, and the Livingston County Building Department. Support.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Kalani, a second from Commissioner Newsom. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posnay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you.
I've always got a comment during the meeting.
That's fine.
Thanks again.
All righty, have a good one. Next up, Item 9 is our second call to the public this evening. Anyone have anything that they would like to add? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public, and we'll move to Item 10, our Planner's Report. Troy, do you have anything this evening?
Just a couple things. One, just to let you know, we have hired a new planner. She started this week, so feel free to stop by the office if you get a chance to introduce yourself to her. I think most of you met her at the joint meeting with the Township Board and the Planning Commission, but you're always welcome to swing by the office. Secondly, just to let you know, we've got a couple projects that you've all seen and approved that are working their way through the system and are probably going to be starting construction new fairly soon. One is Walnut Ridge condominium, site condominium project, residential subdivision. Second one is the Speedway Gas Station. We're starting to get pretty close with them, and then another one is the Mug &amp; Bops Gas Station Convenience Store at the corner of Clark Road and M-59. Then also, maybe just to provide some updates on Newberry, the applicant is revising the plans per the three meetings at the Planning Commission, and then also, they're still working with MDOT and the Road Commission. So they've got some hurdles to overcome before they can come back to you. So things are still happening on that, on all those projects, just to kind of give you some brief updates, so.
Great, thank you.
Could I just ask one question? Did they give you a timetable when they are projecting they're going to be back here?
No, they're having, they applied to MDOT in November, December, and they still don't have any kind of formal determination as to what MDOT is going to require them to do, and the Road Commission is essentially sitting back and saying, they're waiting till MDOT comments. So I'm, from the conversations I've had, they want to get a resolution from MDOT as soon as possible, so I don't have a timetable on that.
Anything else? Okay, Item 11, Committee Reports, Comments, anyone? We need a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Commissioner Voight and Commissioner Newsom, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay. Thank you. You guys?